Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call the October the 2nd meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. The first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Vice Mayor, Ms. Abel.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
All right, we have, I need a motion to excuse Mr. Mashburn tonight. He's not able to be with us tonight. If I could entertain such a motion. A second?
Second.
Okay, well, excuse all in favor. The other thing, on the, I have one agenda addition. Mr. McMahon will bring that to our attention here in just a little while. Okay, the next item is the approval of the September the 5th Town Board meetings. Everybody had a chance to read them? All right, call for a motion to approve.
(Inaudible)
You just hit, didn't you?
No.
You want to hear my addition?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear any objections. We did, okay. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
(Inaudible)
I wanted to ask how the Board would feel about closing Bidwell Street for a few hours on Halloween night, just for the safety of trick-or-treaters, because there's a lot of fun.
(Inaudible)
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thanks for calling my attention to that. I'm sorry, apologize. Okay, approval of the September the 5th Town Board minutes?
(Inaudible)
I thought we just voted on that.
I thought we voted to add his...
We did.
And that, okay.
And approved the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
As presented, with the addition.
I'll wake up in a minute.
Well, I may wake up with you here in a minute. Okay, all right. So, if it's appro, okay, well, the Board will approve the minutes of the September the 5th Town Board.
I'm over.
Okay, thank you.
I'll stay.
All right, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
Okay, that takes care of that. All right, we've got, we're close enough to the public hearing. If I can stall another minute, it'll be 7:05. Councilor, would it be okay to go ahead and start it?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We're close enough, just anybody else who wanders in, let them speak.
Okay. All right, I have two people signed up to speak to the public hearing regarding Senate Bill 155, popularly known as the brunch bill. The first is Mr. Bill Van Horn, and I'm limiting comments to five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, rest of the Council people, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. First of all, I'm for the brunch bill for two reasons. One, I see that it would benefit some of our local businesses by allowing them to serve alcohol Sunday morning. Secondly, just like I enjoy a glass of wine when I go out to buy a dinner on Friday or Saturday night, a glass of wine or a beer with my dinner, I have, I have friends, primarily they come from outside of town, and they've lived in big cities, and they enjoy having a cocktail. And if I were to take them out for brunch on Sunday morning, they would very much enjoy the opportunity to purchase a cocktail at Sunday brunch. So I hope that you'll consider the brunch bill favorably, again, because I think it will benefit some of our local businesses, and I believe it will better support tourism and people visiting our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Horn. The next is Lenny Jordan. Mr. Jordan, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and the rest of the Board. I am also in support of the brunch bill, although I have to say it will not directly affect Lazy Hiker. But I do think that the brunch bill brings us more in line with other locales. As Bill mentioned, I think folks coming from out of town, and we are primarily, tourism is our business, that the lunch, the brunch bill aligns us in a favorable light with other locations. I have friends who customarily drive out of Macon County and out of Franklin to have brunch in other locations. Not necessarily always drinking, but they have that option if they want. So I would just encourage you all to vote for this bill, and I think it will be good for the town in general, and will also bring in more revenue. There's more sales tax and that sort of thing. So I just encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, those are the only two speakers I have signed up to the public hearing, so being no one else, I'll declare this public hearing closed. Pass that down, please, ma'am. All right, the next on the agenda is the public session period. Mr. Van Horn, I see you signed back up, sir?
Yeah, I get two for one tonight. Again, thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. What I want to talk about is downtown parking. And I've read a lot of articles in the paper. I've been living in Franklin since 2002. The issue's come up multiple times. From my perspective, I am for a change. I have to believe that any change will be better than the situation we have right now. My wife drives a Subaru, and I drive a Chevy crew cab truck. Sometimes my wife allows me to drive her Subaru. Whether I drive the Subaru or my Chevy crew cab truck downtown, every time I drive down Main Street, I'm apprehensive. I'm apprehensive about people stepping out from the cars that are parked along the sides. I'm apprehensive about people parking Suburbans or trucks like mine in those diagonal parking areas. You know, heaven forbid that two truck drivers park their trucks right across from each other, I'm driving down there in my truck, and Jimbo is driving in the other lane down through town in his truck. And another issue related to that is I hope that your town planner and your engineer will take a look at just truck parking in general. Again, when I drive my truck and I'm coming downtown, I will either park in the town hall parking lot, or I will park on one of the parallel parking spaces at the end of Main Street just before you get the light. Or I'll drive around and try to find a large enough parking spot in either one of the two parking lots, either behind Wells Fargo, or behind, if you will, the bookstore and behind Rascaler. So as you move forward, I hope that you'll have people look at where, you know, large trucks can park, you know? Like my Chevy. A lot of folks, obviously, in our county have pickup trucks, and I would encourage them, I think it's the right thing to do, not to park those big trucks, or a Suburban, or a Cadillac Escalade out on Main Street. But I think there needs to be some consideration of where we can find parking spaces large enough to accommodate those trucks, and look at what can be done in the two lots behind Main Street. Again, thank you very much for allowing me to address you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ledford, Jimbo Ledford.
Good evening, everybody. I want to agree with these two guys. First of all, my name is Jimbo Ledford. Tonight I am here with several of my associates representing Chiapasca. We are here to ask for the town's permission, cooperation, and guidance where necessary for the use of the Whitmire property to hold an outdoor music, food, craft, art, beer festival. We would hope to hold this early in the spring and coordinate it with events that are already going on for Trail Days, so that we could try to make this a town-wide celebration. We already have some people coming in for the trail anyways. We believe that we could pull more people in off the trail with a celebration of this type. We're talking about a weekend long, starting Friday and then on Sunday, with camping, local food, local breweries, local art, local crafts, some big headline music, a second stage for local bands. We could do some open mic, various things like that. We're very early on in this process. Obviously, we don't want to put too much time in until we have the venue. So we would ask the town for permission to use the Whitmire property. And further along the line, we would need bathroom facilities, use of the Macon County Transit. I know that these are crossing some lines that may be formed between the town and the county, but I think that those can be merged to form some form of cooperation. Between all this, we would need an event drinking pass for the weekend, which would include 10:00 a.m. on Sunday. Help with security, any kind of stages, or covers, or tables, or anything that the town may have that we could use for that. A liaison from the Town Board, preferably myself, to work with the coordination of this event. We think that we could provide, obviously, an increase in the economy, some cooperation with the local groups. We think that there are some groups already that are doing things of this nature. We think that we can work together with, you know, local food merchants, local breweries. Brandon's late, but he wanted to say he was in favor of the brunch bill. Raise your right hand if that's correct.
Yeah.
So this is what we're asking for. We know that we could immediately increase the economy. We're going to get some headline bands. We've already been in touch with some bands that are big bands that are interested in coming and playing this festival. This is not a pipe dream. It's already in the works. We just need permission to use our own property, and a little partnership with the town and some guidance. Show us what we can do, what you can do, how we can make this work for the town. Obviously, the money's going to go back to the occupancy tax. We're going to fill the rooms. It's going to help do that. There's immediate jobs available now. If we have to go ahead on this, we have people that we need for coordination, planning, scheduling, booking, bookkeeping, accounting, whatever. There are jobs already here. So I know that this is something you guys can't vote on tonight, but if we could get on the agenda for next month, we would come up with a comprehensive plan that would include parking, shuttle services, pricing, bands, whatever you want to see. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jimbo.
Okay. I forgot how to use this watch. Okay. All right, the next is Ms. Angela Moore. Mrs. Moore, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Angela Moore. I'm here tonight to make the Board aware of a situation that has been gravely mishandled. Tonight you will vote once again to set a public hearing for an amendment to the definition of an apartment in the UDO. This issue has been billed as a simple formality, or a simple definition change. It isn't anything but that. While I support the change wholeheartedly, the way that it has been presented to you is intentionally deceptive and grossly inaccurate. The issue was first presented on August 7th as an agenda item added at the meeting and not advertised to the public. When it was discussed, the Board was informed that it was a fairly simple amendment of definitions in the UDO to just sort of iron out a slight difficulty, and I quoted that. The Board was encouraged to set a public hearing the following month and assumed the Planning Board would afford it. When Councilmember Collins did not make the motion to set the public hearing, he was again encouraged by the town's lawyer to add the public hearing to his motion. Admirably, Councilman Collins spoke up about his hesitance, but when he asked if the matter was pro forma, simply a formality, he was told that it was, and the motion was made and passed unanimously. This matter is not pro forma. It is not just a formality. Apartment is currently defined as a structure at least two stories where dwelling units are located above other units. This means you cannot take a two-story house and rent the upper story and the lower story as separate rental units in a residential zoning. As a side note, this in no way prohibits extended family living in your basement. I find this current law to be unreasonable, and I'm happy to see the change to allow rentals. I am appalled that it would be changed by manipulating and deceiving this Board. On behalf of my neighbors, I've been complaining for almost a year about an illegal apartment that was established in our neighborhood. After all, the rules, even the bad ones, should be the same for all of us, with no special treatment for anyone. The town ignored my complaints for months, unended. Then, instead of addressing them, the staff were suddenly asking you to change the law as a simple formality. What the motivations were, I can't imagine, but they were without a doubt trying to hide their actions. Fast forward to the Planning Board meeting two weeks later. It was brought to the attention of the town planner, who brought it to the attention of the town's lawyer, that the requirement for ordinance 152.161, that an application for amendment to the UDO shall be filed not less than 30 days prior to the Planning Board's meeting at which the application is to be considered. The application was only 15 days old and had been filed August 7th, right before the Board meeting. Though the town planner, through the town planner, the town's lawyer counseled the Planning Board to proceed contrary to the town's ordinance. This type of conduct from public servants demands answers. This item was put on the agenda late, falsely billed to the Board as a formality, and pushed a public hearing too quickly. To add to all of this, it was sent illegally to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board was instructed to disregard the law. While this change is a good one, and should be the first of many changes to give us back our rights, this incident demands investigation. Before setting a public hearing for this issue, I would strongly urge the Board to investigate why the town attorney and town planner were pushing this through quickly and quietly, and at times illegally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. (inaudible).
Any questions?
We have all the answers. Okay. All right, new business. Board, we're looking for the Board action on Senate Bill 155, the brunch bill. Any discussion from the Board on this item before we bring in for a motion either way?
It sounds to me like most people seem to be favor, in favor of it.
There's no one here speaking against it.
I haven't heard any opposed.
Okay, that being said, I'll entertain a motion, however you want the motion to be.
Oh, you want me to make the motion?
Or who?
I'll make the motion.
All right, to adopt it?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a second?
That's a second.
All right, all in favor? Okay. Okay. Street closing request for the Ruby Drop. Mr. Crabtree, sir?
How are you doing? I'll come over here, I probably don't need it, but I'll just go over here. This is our Ruby Drop request, the same as the past years. This year we're requesting all of Main Street and the cross-section of the square. As we started to do last year, we're moving the Ruby further down the street. This year we would like to do it right in the middle of Town Square if we get the street closing approved. We're trying to incorporate this event into all businesses on Main Street to make it a town event. Obviously, it's a sponsored event by Craftery Family Enterprises and Motor Company Grill, but everybody opens up, and it's getting bigger each year. So our request is, this year, New Year's Eve is on a Sunday, so we request to close at 5:00 p.m. until 2:00 a.m. We expect we will get cleaned up before 2:00 a.m., in which case we could let the police officers who are opening the street back up know, and they could open up early. We just put 2:00 as kind of a safety. We're doing things a little different this year to make our cleanup a little easier and faster, and I don't know about the other businesses, but we close pretty much right after midnight, 12:30 is about the latest that goes. And so our request would be to close all of Main Street, starting from wherever you would need to close it, I guess, down at the hospital road, all the way to the funeral home.
Mr. Crabtree, I have one question. You'd like to have the Ruby drop in the intersection.
That's what we would like to do. What we would like to do is put the crane right beside the clock tower on the lower part of the street, and extend it up right into the middle of the intersection.
Okay, what about the street lights? I mean, the traffic lights? You going to be able to clear those?
Yeah, oh yeah. I mean, as far as height goes?
Yes.
Yes, we would be able to clear those. If, if the street closing is approved, I was going to contact the state and see if they would be willing to turn those lights off for the event. I don't know if it's a possibility. I haven't looked into it at all. But we would be able to get over, the Ruby is 60 feet in the air, so we would be well over.
Let me see if Mr. Moore or Chief Adams could answer that question about the traffic lights. Are they controlled in that big aluminum box there?
Yeah, the main controllers in the large aluminum boxes, they can probably shut off. Where the master, we can shut certain ones off. If it goes forward, you can, you can get it out. Me and I'll get you the right thing before that.
Okay.
And if it's not possible to do it in the square, last year we did it right in front of Integra Bank, and that worked really well. But we, we are working to move our entertainment a little farther down the street as well. So we're just going to try and change things up a little bit this year.
Right. Certainly, a lot of fun last year, despite the rain.
We're hoping for pretty weather this year.
It was really good. Y'all did a great job. What's the, what's the pleasure of the Board tonight? Do you want to act on this tonight, or do we need some further study on it? It's up to the Board. I think I'm getting the consensus of going ahead and voting. Am I, am I reading that right? Okay.
Chief Adams, did, you feel okay with it?
I think it's a little early to shut down town at 5:00 p.m. because the bridge is out, then we have to route everybody around the hospital. I think it'd be a mess to shut down that early.
Okay, what time would you?
I don't know, 7:00 or 8:00.
Will that give you guys enough time to set up, though?
If we move our entertainment down, out of the street, we've done our entertainment in the street the past years. This year we're, we're hoping to do it on the square. We've kind of been in contact about that. If we don't want to set a stage up in the street, then 7:00 would probably...
Would be possible maybe to close Iowa Street earlier, set your stage up there, and then close Main Street later, 7:00.
Yeah.
(inaudible) will be to close Iowa Street at 5:00 and Main Street at 7:00.
And both until 2:00 a.m.?
Yeah.
Okay, and working with the police chief and everybody else, it might have to be a little wiggle worm somewhere in here, but I, I'll entertain the motion that we accept it.
Did you make the motion?
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All right, get that, get that Ruby up there.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Crabtree. All right, the next is to set a public hearing for event venues. Mr. Setzer, sir, you're up.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. For you tonight to have a set of hearing at our November meeting for venue was addition to our UDO under section 152 dash 010 and 152 dot 024 in the UDO, which is under definitions and special requirements. The Planning Board has reviewed it, and next step is to set a hearing to give any more detail on the changes and what they're...
So you're, you're asking for a motion to set a public hearing for Monday, November the 6th, 7:05 p.m.? Oh, p.m., excuse me, p.m.
And 7:10, well, you know, the party.
And, okay, you want to go right on it, that's both at one time?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, because any incorrect lay legal opinions notwithstanding will be properly before you for a decision with that meeting.
Okay, good. So I'll entertain such a motion to set both these public hearings.
And that is set.
Ms. McCray moves. Is a second? Ms. Abel seconds. All in favor? All right. All right. Ms. Woodruff, Town Manager, if you would, an update on the Town of Franklin festivals for 2017.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Board. First of all, I don't know if we've really got to chat about the solar eclipse, but certainly want to take the time to thank the Board for allowing town staff to kind of explore this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I think we had a great crowd and a good time by all. But with that, you've got some flyers before you. On the backside, we do have some upcoming events. The first one we have upcoming is going to be your 21st Annual Pumpkin Fest, and that will be October the 21st. It's a Saturday, and it's from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then our next event will be our November 11th Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony, and I know Mayor Scott's been working on that, so I'll turn that over to him. We're looking at a couple of days, because November the 11th is actually Veterans Day, but I do believe some organizations are having it on the 10th, November the 10th. Then we'll also have two nights of Winter Wonderland. The first night's November the 25th, and the second night is December the 2nd. We have the world's largest rocking horse and inflatable snowman coming this year, so stay tuned.
Okay.
It happens.
While we're asking about the events, Veterans Day is historically on November the 11th. However, there are some calendars that are putting Veterans Day on November the 10th as being the day it's observed. Commissioner Shields and I met today, and we suddenly learned that after we started thinking that it would be on the 11th. So right now, we, we really have not firmed up. We've got to get with the Legion, the VFW, the high school band, and see which day that we're going to do it. But we are going to have a Veterans Day. I just don't know whether it'll be on the 10th or the 11th.
I take it 11th, it's a Sunday.
No, it's Saturday. It's a Saturday. And we've got quite a...
Take it for it to do it on a Friday? Is there a bigger crowd or something?
I don't know. That just depends on the participants, if they want to move it to the observed day or to the historical day. That's, that's the question right now.
I'm confused about it.
Why?
Why, I don't know. I mean, Sunday I could see.
Right.
Who, who has changed it from the 11th, which has always been, to an observed day of 10th? Is that a government thing?
Yeah, it's a, it's a national thing, yeah.
And what would be the...
Well, the, all that we're, all that we're facing right now is to whether to do it on the observed day or the historical day.
That's right.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to figure out why there's two of us.
I don't know. You might call Washington and say...
I ain't calling Washington.
Because that's not something that we did, but if you'll go to your calendars, you'll see that November the 10th is the observed Veterans Day. But it also depends on the children and students being in school or not in school. So we're just going to have to get back to you on this one, but there's a lot of, this is one of the most enthusiastic things that we do as far as honoring some people that need to be honored, so. I'll get back to you on that as soon as I know something, and we'll let you know.
I mean, is it not, is it not the Board's decision?
Well, if you want to make the decision tonight...
I'm just wondering, if we're, if we're setting the holiday, the agenda for Wednesdays are, we kind of need to know when they're, when they're going to be.
Well, why don't you make a motion to change it one way or the other? Well, then what is the issue?
Well, what then? I mean, is this going to take some coordination with the county? In that the, historically, the event seems to have a lot of county, good, you know, good influence with it. I'm just trying to figure out what is the reason why it would not be on the Saturday the 11th? I guess that's my question. Why would it not be on Saturday the 11th?
I think that one of the reasons is, is that it's a federal holiday. The feds quite often observe something on a day to make for long weekends.
Now, that might, that might be, yeah.
Yes, sir, Mr. Derrick, you seem to...
November the 10th is also the meaningful birthday. Think about it.
Well, do you think that would affect the Veterans Day, or just add to it? But y'all usually get together...
I don't know.
Y'all usually get together at night, though, and cut a cake with a sword, and it's, no, I'm serious. It's, it's a big, formal dinner. I've been invited to them a few times, yeah.
I never wore a dress blue, though.
Yeah.
But, but the town is going to have a Veterans Day ceremony?
Absolutely.
And we originally proposed to...
And the next meeting is November 6th. So we need to figure out tonight, otherwise, November 6th, too late to put out any notice on when it's going to be. Now, if I'm mistaken, somebody jump in.
What's the place of the Board?
The schools aren't closed, are they?
Schools generally are not closed, because we had the high school ban last year, and they, they came, and then they had to go back to school, had class.
Some more kids might be able to participate if we had it on a Saturday versus if we had it on Friday.
That's true. Well, I think a lot of this depends on how the VFW and the American Legion sees it as well.
Just for the record, the schools are out that day.
They are out on the 10th.
It's a holiday.
So we've got the same catch-22 either way, as far as the, having the ban... So, we've got the same catch-22 either way as far as the having the ban and the students that are going to be taking part.
Do we believe that most towns will be doing it on the 10th this year?
I have no idea. I just found this out at 2:00 today. And now, I'm thinking that, well, we're just, the planning committee is going to be meeting again this week, and we can make a decision if it's okay with the board, if we make the decision. The town's involvement is in setting up chairs. We've already had the donation of a sound system, regardless of which day it's going to be. We've had commitments from several things that will be a very patriotic theme. The fire truck always hangs the big American flag. And then, we have the flag, so we shut down Main Street for 30 minutes, 45 minutes.
It might be easier for our employees to have it on Friday. They are not working.
Either one's fine.
Is it okay?
Saturday or Friday.
Okay. Well, then, I say that's the planning board, the planning commission or committee or whatever you are, but y'all decide. That's my vote.
I know. All right. Whatever this board wants to do, just make a decision, and we'll go with it.
Well, it sounds like you want it just the town is involved.
Well, it's.
Like something that is solely.
No, it's, that's why Commissioner Shields and I met this afternoon to start some serious planning on this.
I'm sure you'll make a wonderful decision.
Let the planning board make the decision.
The planning board doesn't have anything to do with this.
No, we mean you, the planning committee.
With the commission.
This is the veterans. It's the American Legion and the VFW supply a lot of the manpower, the color guard, the flag.
They need to have input.
They're having input, Mr. Collins.
Well, then, do they want the 10th or the 11th?
Well, let them decide.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, is to say that they're going to decide which to do, whether they're going to be the 10th or the 11th.
Rainey can talk to us about Bidwell Street now.
Yeah. All right. So, where are we?
Bidwell Street.
Okay, Bidwell Street. And I'll let you know what the planning committee involved, all these people involved are going to do. It's going to be good, whatever it is. Mr. McMahon, answer.
Yeah. I just wanted to bring up and get Chief Adams' opinion and the opinion of the board and see what you guys thought about the possibility of closing Bidwell for a few hours on Halloween night because there are so many people on Bidwell trick-or-treating. And I lived on Bidwell for a while, and it appears to me that it could be a safety concern at times. You know, with so many kids out in the street and cars still using it as they normally would, I just wanted to get everybody's thoughts on the possibility of closing for safety.
Chief, do we have any idea?
I think it'd be a great idea.
Okay.
I talked to some residents from last year.
I saw somebody.
Traffic only.
Said that there were hundreds of children came to that house.
I'd say thousands.
Yeah.
Thousands. I've stayed corrected.
The first year I worked there, we had a ticker, and when it rolled past 1,000, I stopped.
Oh, come on.
No, we're serious. Harrison Avenue has the same situation.
Where would the cars park?
They often park down at the Old Ingalls or the other little businesses, you know, around that area, and they'll hit like the fire department and police station if they're doing it, and then go up Bidwell and Harrison and walk back down.
And we love it.
But it's almost all on foot.
But we do want the children to be safe.
Yeah.
But Sitzer, y'all doing the move ash again this year?
Okay.
Almost all the traffic, the trick-or-treaters is on foot, you know, and you'll see people trying to cut through, and they're driving up there at, you know, 10 miles an hour watching for kids, but it's dark, and kids might not always be wearing bright-colored costumes, et cetera. Yeah.
So, it needs to be closed on both ends and then also across.
Except to like local traffic only, I guess, if you had to get home.
We talked just a little bit, I don't know if it was you and Chief Adams, and I talked just a little bit about if somebody has to go home, they can tell the police where they live, and they'll let them come through. But it'll take that bumper-to-bumper traffic off of Bidwell Street. All right. Any further discussion? There being none, I'll call for a motion to close Bidwell Street during.
Yeah, what time?
What would be the? Yeah.
I was getting ready to say, what would the hours be?
Seven.
They start really early, though.
At least you can see them.
They start at 3:30 or 4:00.
Soon as school's out, they're there.
You're kidding.
No, they pick them up for school, and they hit the houses on the.
Chief Adams made the recommendation of 5:00.
I think 5:00 would be good.
Okay.
Until 11:00? Is that, or is that?
Earlier than, yeah, 10:00.
10:00.
Nobody comes after that.
5:00 to 10:00?
Is 10:00, are they still out there between 9:00 and 10:00?
Not many. It kind of dies down after about 9:00.
I'm thinking 5:00 to 9:00.
That would definitely cover the busiest portion of it.
5:00 to 9:00, closing. Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, 5:00 to 9:00. Okay, Mr. Henning, you got it there, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Henning, councilman, you have an update on the minimum housing code enforcement? This is for information only.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just want to keep you all in the loop on our progress on these housing enforcements. Today, I went and petitioned a clerk for entry of default on two of these properties, the ones on Brittany Lane and Pauline Avenue. Mr. Collins could tell you, that's one step removed from a default judgment. It means that we don't have a legal answer from any of the owners of that property, essentially not contesting the town's ability to move forward with it. So, that's where that stands at the moment. I'll be moving to Superior Court later this month for an order for the town to be able to go and remediate those properties. The other one on 76 Hillcrest Avenue, it has presented some service problems that we're still working through, so it may be delayed by a month or so, but we're going to proceed with all due speed on that one as well.